Please stand and join us with pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sam Harris Jones Egan Caputa Shuldrough Henke Begano Parson.
Next item is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections additions to the meetings and executive meetings minutes of March 11, 2018, 2019? Hearing none. Councilman Jones moves who approve the minutes second by Mr. Harris. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Meeting minutes are approved. Next item is plaque presentation. Pepos Vision Institute and 911 Vision Foundation.
The 9/11, the 9/11 Vision's Foundation and Pepos Vision staff has offered free Lasik eye surgery to qualified Florissant police officers, which has resulted in significant improvements in the officers' vision. As of this date, nine Florissant officers have been given the Lasik surgery and more officers are scheduled in April. The benefits of the Lasik surgery allows the officers to do their jobs better and safer because of the clearer vision. Dr. J. Pepos first came up with the idea of the 9/11 Vision Foundation after the September 11th attacks, when he noted how many first responders wore corrective lenses as they served in their official capacities. Dr. Pepos performed extensive research and had a series of conversations with first responders, which made him realize how much the corrective lenses impeded the on-the-job safety and performance of first responders. Dr. Pepos then created the foundation, first starting within his own practice at the Pepos Vision Institute. All of our officers have been or will be treated by Dr. Pepos and Morris at the Pepos Vision Institute. It is because of the individuals mentioned above, as well as the Pepos Vision Institute and 9/11 Vision Foundation, that numerous Florissant police officers now have excellent vision without corrective eyeglasses or contacts. The excellent vision will translate to improved officer safety and performance of their duties for years to come. So, please accept this plaque with our special and sincere thanks.
Just another example of how our community supports our police officers. I mean, there's just so many from, you know, donuts when we need them in a crisis. I mean, you guys, there's no end to the amount of treats that you get down there. You could always get a treat when you go down to the cafeteria at the police station. But this, the community shows their support in so many different ways, and this is just such a meaningful one. And it's actually almost a life changer for some people. Thank you.
Yeah, I can echo what the mayor said. Thank you so much for what you've already done for. I believe eight of our officers have already gone through the surgery. We've got five more that are scheduled. And I mean, it's just outstanding that you would offer this service in your foundation. And you've done so much for our police officers here and our first responders. We appreciate it. Rebecca, do you want to come up and say something? Rebecca Zoll from North County Inc. She, actually, they're the ones that introduced me to this plan about two months ago, and we've already been moving on it.
So, I just want to congratulate the officers who have had the opportunity to take advantage of this awesome program that has been brought to us by one of our business partners. North County Incorporated was very proud when we were approached by Vision 911. Actually, I have now joined their board of directors because they showed such good intent to work in our community. Florissant is the first community. Hazelwood will have some officers in the next few months, and hopefully eventually with enough donations from the public, we'll be able to roll this out to all of the police officers, EMS, and firefighters in the North St. Louis County community. So, thank you, Dr. Pepos. Thank you, board. And congratulations to the Florissant officers.
Lieutenant Sharp is one of the eight officers that have already had the surgery. I just want him to reflect on it also.
There's absolutely no way possible we could thank you for what you've done for us. But hopefully, when you look at that plaque every day, you know that you've made a difference on a lot of lives, and you have a lot of people here that are really thankful for what you've done.
I just want to say how much we appreciate all that you do for us, to protect us and all the things that, you know, we take for granted, and we should never take for granted, you know, so it's often taken for granted. So, I just, I'm glad that we can do something to pay back in some small way, and, you know, Pepos Vision and in collaboration with the Umschool School of Optometry and our board. So, we really do appreciate all that you do.
Thank you again.
Next item is police accommodations. Police Officer Jody Chappie.
Officer Chappie was assigned as the domestic violence coordinator in early 2018. Officer Chappie has been responsible for conducting follow-up investigations on all domestic violence cases reported to the Florissant Police Department. Those investigations include follow-up interviews, obtaining medical records, assisting with orders of protection, warrant application, and providing information about outreach programs for the abused. Officer Chappie has investigated over 100 domestic violence cases, referring 26 to the municipal court, and 20 cases to state court, with numerous warrants being issued for domestic violence-related charges. Officer Chappie has performed all this while maintaining patrol duties and remains among the leaders in enforcement activity. Due to Officer Chappie's initiative, dedication, and commitment to law enforcement, she is hereby officially commended.
On February 7, 2019, there was a radio broadcast regarding an armed robbery, a carjacking, where a vehicle was forcibly taken from a female victim with her two-year-old child still in the vehicle. Officer Summers was returning from her assigned DARE class as she began searching for the vehicle and located the vehicle in the 1200 block of St. Florence. The temperatures were falling fast, and it was significant that she found the child in the abandoned vehicle quickly. When she removed the child from the vehicle, she was able to calm and comfort the child. Medical personnel was, medical personnel were summoned, and it was determined that the child was unharmed. During the time immediately after the carjacking, Lieutenant Foff was canvassing the area when he noticed a subject who matched the description of one of the suspects searching the area for his lost cellphone that he had dropped during the carjacking. Lieutenant Foff maintained a visual on the subject and was able to apprehend the individual without incident. The suspects were later arrested and charged with first-degree robbery. Because of these officers' excellent police work, compassionate caring, and their personal initiative, they are hereby officially commended.
Police Officer Joseph Brockmeyer, Police Officer Dominic Margirio, and Police Officer Mobin Malik.
On September 27, 2018, a burglary report was taken at the Grandview Convenience Store in the 1700 block of Dunn Road. Later, the same day, Officers Magario and Brockmeyer located the suspect from the Berkeley, riding a bicycle on Dunn Road. The officers engaged in a foot pursuit but lost the suspect in a wooded area. On February 27, 2019, five months after the burglary, Officer Magario again recognized the suspect walking west on Dunn Road. Upon the arrival of Officer Malik, the suspect was taken into custody after a brief struggle. The suspect was transported to police headquarters, where he was interviewed by Officers Magario and Brockmeyer. The officers were able to secure a full confession from the suspect, and warrants were later issued by the St. Louis County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Because of their diligence, professionalism, and teamwork, they were able to arrest a felon many months after a crime and have now made the streets for Florissant safer. They are officially commended.
They're all leaving the room now, but just another example of how wonderful our police department is. I think we've got one of the best departments in the country. I just want to say, one of these, when I found out that our DARE officer was involved in capturing a bad guy, I just want euphoric. Leslie Summers deserves an award for being in a fifth-grade classroom. She does a wonderful job as our DARE officer, but when she helped to capture a criminal, that was just amazing.
Yeah, you know, actually, that's the second time in about six months that she's had a similar incident, where she actually caught a guy trying to rob a Brink's truck, and she actually apprehended them also, and I think that was about six months ago. So, she does do more than just DARE, I promise you that. But I agree with the mayor. I mean, we just have an excellent police department here in the city of Florissant, and I like to take all the credit for it, but I can't. It's actually the people you just seen, and it's the guys that do this every day and protect us, make sure we feel safe at night, and if we go to bed knowing that we're going to be protected. So, I just want to thank those guys for everything they do. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Next item on your agenda is a special presentation from Metropolitan Sewer District.
Good evening. I'm Sean Hadlin, the manager of Public Affairs for the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District. In your packet, you have two items that we're going to talk about tonight. Proposition S is what we're going to focus on. You have a proposition at a glance, and then you also have just a two-pager that shows exactly kind of how the rate breaks down. Brett Berthold, who is our Director of Operations, is going to go ahead and give you guys a presentation on Prop S. It's going to be on about April 2 here, so we're going to go ahead and give you information, and we can take questions afterward.
Good evening, everyone. Here, I can do it. I can do it, Sean. Yeah, I got it. So, short presentation. I'm sure everybody here knows that we're both a wastewater and a stormwater utility. I'm going to talk about stormwater tonight. You remember back in 2016, we passed a small tax. That tax lets us take care of the operation and maintenance of our existing infrastructure that we have in the ground. What's coming up on April 2 is actually a vote to let us have a capital program to address some of the stormwater flooding, yard flooding, erosion, those types of things. What's this, if we get approval here, what's this going to do for us? It's going to address some of the things that you see in these slides here. It could be localized flooding that may affect several backyards. It could be erosion, and there's a pretty severe case of erosion that actually took out a road as well. Or it could be localized flooding. These services are currently not provided by MSD. They're really provided by no one, and that's what we're here on Tuesday asking for the public to approve. So, how big is the problem? For many years, we've been collecting issues from around our service area and everything. Right now, we have about 500 cataloged. We continue to receive issues and catalog them. We've done really quick tabletop estimates on the size and cost of the program and how much is out there, and it's about a half a billion dollars of issues that we've identified. Now, these might be everything from a backyard issue that may be $50,000 to correct, or it could be a multimillion-dollar issue because there's severe erosion in a creek and people's homes are in jeopardy. You know, what are some of the potential solutions? Here's a couple examples. We've built some large basins, you know. Truly, some houses should not have built, been built where they were built, and some of the best solutions are to actually buy them out. We've done that in certain areas where we've had funding to do that. This happens to be an example where we actually purchased a number of homes and built a basin that can collect the water when it rains and release it slowly so it doesn't overwhelm our system. Here's a little example, just kind of want to show you the types of things that we can do if this is approved by the voters of St. Louis County in our service area. This happens to be out on Fish Park Creek. Back in, I think it was 2008, MSD had limited funding at that time, but then we were challenged and sued, and we actually lost in Missouri Supreme Court the ruling, so the funding went away. But this was one project when we had funding that we did. You'll see in the upper left-hand corner there, that's actually the bank of the creek. When the homeowner moved in there, the creek was actually about 75 feet away from his back door and everything. We came in, and if you'll look at the bottom left-hand corner there, we actually came in, put some rock there, repaired his backyard and everything. The rock helps dissipate the energy when it floods, and those are similar solutions. What you won't see MSD do anymore is build concrete channels. Those don't solve any issues, and actually, they're illegal these days. We couldn't build them if we wanted to. The DNR would, and the EPA would prevent it. But you'll see after, before Hurricane Ike, after Hurricane Ike, what took place there. We would also potentially build rain gardens. You know, the whole idea with stormwater is to slow the flow down, prevent it from overwhelming the system, and kind of take the energy out of it, so we could build rain gardens. Or if we really have to, we'll build sewers. There's a number of projects out there that are three or four yards in the back. You know, it rains real hard, the water floods there and everything, and so you go in and you build sewers to transport that water away. And so, what are we proposing? We've been out, we've been talking to a number of municipalities for a long time, the public and everything, trying to get a gauge on what they felt was a palatable level of funding. We've kind of zeroed in on generating $30 million in funding a year to support these projects. For an average residential homeowner, it's $2.25 a month, or $27 for a year. So, if you leave with one little nugget of information, those are the two numbers that I'd kind of like you to remember, and we're going to dig into some more detail here. I want to point out, we're not taking ownership of creeks and streams. Creeks and streams are still privately owned, and we won't be the floodplain manager that still resides with municipalities and communities and everything. So, how are we generating our bills? What we're looking at is the impervious area that a homeowner or a municipality, or a hospital, or someone like that would generate it. So, it's the amount of parking lots, the amount of roofs, sidewalks, those types of things, patios. And we would do a calculation based on the amount of impervious area that a homeowner or a business would own. And so, this is really what I want to get to, to kind of explain the fee structure. What I want to point out first is go to Tier 2 there, okay? If you look at that, that's residential property owners. Tier 2 is your average homeowner in our service area, okay? The average homeowner is about 2,600 square feet of impervious area, and that would cost them $2.25 a month, okay? If you go to Tier 1, little smaller home, less impervious area, they would be paying $1.42 a month. And then, if you look at Tier 3 and Tier 4, those are some of your larger homes, some of the bigger ones with more impervious area and everything. Out of that, though, if you take all of our residential properties, we would generate from our residents and homeowners about $14 million a year out of the $30 million, okay? The rest of the money would be generated by commercial properties, municipality buildings like this, or duplexes, some of those types of things. And we're going to do those on ERUs. And I just want to spend a minute and explain that. An ERU is an equivalent residential unit, and that equates to 2,600 square feet, so your typical average home. And what we would do is go out and actually calculate for each property the number of ERUs that they have on it. And you take the number of ERUs, which is a little more than 600,000, multiply them by 2.25, and that's how you come up with about the other $16 million of revenue annually, okay? So, that's how we plan on generating the funds. What we've done is we've flown the area. So, we've actually taken pictures in the winter and measured things up to the best of our abilities and calculated it that way, okay? I want to pause there and just ask if there's any questions about how we're calculating and generating, proposing to generate the funds. Yes, sir?
Mr. Parson.
Thank you. I just have a question on the actual cost. You're saying it would average $2.25 per month for a household. Is that a fixed cost, or is that something that's variable?
No, it's a fixed cost. So, if your home falls between 2,001 square feet of impervious area and 3,600 square feet of impervious area, it would be $2.25 a month.
Okay. Is it for a certain time limit, or?
No, it's every month.
I mean, it's not for a term of years or anything like that?
No, it's currently, it's currently not. No, sir.
Additionally, you mentioned some repairs that needed to be done to some of the systems. How do you choose what is a priority? I know there's a lot of areas that needed to be, needed to have some work done, but what are the priorities for MSD?
Very good question. We've cataloged all these issues that we've had out there. We've looked at the benefit, and there's a score that gives you the benefit on like number of properties that it affects and those types of things versus the cost. So, we're looking at it from a benefit-to-cost ratio, and we're just taking the top ones and working our way down. So, you may think, well, you won't get to some of those problems for quite some time, and the answer is yes. It would take quite some time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Parson. Yes, is there a sunset on these, on this proposition, sunset clause?
A sunset clause? No, not that I'm aware of. It would go on until, I guess, we decided not to, that we fixed everything. I mean, Sean, there's no, there's no sunset clause, right?
So, there's no sunset clause on this at all, unlike our wastewater program, where there is a sunset clause. It's like a 20-year program. The, this will go on, and it's only, it can only go up, to answer your question, if it's voted on by the people. So, it's a $2.25 fixed rate that can never go up, but what we're looking at is for the next five-plus years, doing the program, we've got, you know, we've got properties identified, and what will happen is, at that point, we'll go back to the voters and say, is this something that you want us to continue to do, which is something you want us to go ahead and do more of? You know, and it can go up if the people vote it, because it's a fee. It's not, it's not a tax, unlike back in 2016, you guys voted on Prop S, the original one, which is operation and maintenance of the sewers. That's a, that's a property tax, the 10-cent tax that everybody pays. This is not a tax. This is actual, this is an actual fee or charge that cannot be, again, adjusted without the vote of the people.
And just one more thing. If it doesn't pass, we won't provide the service. So, it's really up to the voters. Yes, we want this service. If they, if they vote yes, hey, great, we're going to be able to supply it and everything. If they don't want the service, then we're not going to provide it.
Do you have a set of contractors that you deal with all the time on this? So, you're going to go out for bid? I mean?
It'll be like we handle all of our projects right now. They'll go out to bid, you know, we'll develop specifications and put them out to the contracting community to bid on.
You're going to use local contractors for your bids, or do you go nationwide for them?
You know, I would assume that most of these would be local contractors. I think the projects are small enough, our local contracting community could do that. I can't say 100%. It just depends on the size and scope of the project and who's doing it here.
I know the way to, this community anyway, I mean, if we're paying our fees for you guys to do this work, we would like to see local contractors being awarded this work. Just, I mean, we're paying for it, so you guys should, you know, try to get local contractors to call this work.
Absolutely. Yep. Agree 100% with you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Just a curious question. So, you have completed some projects. You gave an example of the creek, you know, the creeping creek bank up to the houses, and also, I know, and I don't think this is what would have been your, would have been MSD that did this, but in Florissant, we had some rain, rain gardens installed and a basin. And I think it was through St. Louis County, it may have been some grant money. But my question is, you know, how are you currently funding some of those projects that you are doing already? And will you continue to access that funding? Or, you know, rather than, is this the only funding? It kind of sounded like maybe there wasn't any funding, but there's also projects going on, so I'm trying to?
There, the funding, if this was approved, the funding would just go to correct these stormwater issues. MSD does have several grant programs, and you'd have to contact us on your particular project, and we could see if there is a grant that could possibly cover it. But if, if?
So, currently, the projects that you're doing are being covered by grants?
No, the projects, we are doing a few stormwater projects. There was leftover dollars from the OMCI districts that used to be a tax that were set to zero, and we're consuming those dollars. Once those dollars are consumed, there's no more funding for our stormwater capital improvements.
Okay. Do you work with other agencies? You know, if St. Louis County does projects, do you also work with them? How do you decide whose project it's going to be if they're also doing projects?
You know, on a case-by-case basis, it depends on what the situation is. I can't, that's kind of an open question. I don't.
I'm just curious. It might not be a good answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Harris.
So, with, Mr. Harris, with regards to the rain basins that you're talking about, a lot of that stuff's under the wastewater program, but also, if this does go through, there will be an extension of the green infrastructure program, which right now, we have $100 million invested in our green infrastructure, which is the rain gardens and the basins and everything. There are, development-wise, there are stipulations put on what can be developed, and that's what you're seeing some of these basins being developed, because that's something that St. Louis County has to put on there. That's been our specifications. But the plus side to this program, though, if it does pass, we will have, right now, we have a green infrastructure program that, it's, we have a small grants program that's in the city of St. Louis and kind of just a little bit outside the bounds of the city of St. Louis. This will actually extend out throughout the entire St. Louis, throughout the entire district. And so, there'll be money for grants for rain gardens, basins, and that type of stuff.
Will MSD still manage?
Or a hospital, or someone like that would generate it. So it's the amount of parking lots, the amount of roofs, sidewalks, those types of things, patios. And we would do a calculation based on the amount of impervious area that a homeowner or a business would own. And so this is really what I want to get to, to kind of explain the fee structure. What I want to point out first is go to tier two there, okay? If you look at that, that's residential property owners. Tier two is your average homeowner in our service area, okay? The average homeowner is about twenty-six hundred square feet of impervious area. And that would cost them two dollars and twenty-five cents a month, okay? If you go to tier one, little smaller home, less impervious area, they would be paying a dollar forty-two a month. And then if you look at tier three and tier four, those are some of your larger homes, some of the bigger ones with more impervious area and everything. Out of that, though, if you take all of our residential properties, we would generate from our residents and homeowners about fourteen million dollars a year out of the thirty million dollars, okay? The rest of the money would be generated by commercial properties, municipality, buildings like this, or duplexes, some of those types of things. And we're going to do those on ERUs. And I just want to spend a minute and explain that. An ERU is an equivalent residential unit, and that equates to twenty-six hundred square feet. So your typical average home. And what we would do is go out and actually calculate for each property, the number of ERUs that they have on it. And you take the number of ERUs, which is a little more than six hundred thousand, multiply them by two-point-two-five, and that's how you come up with about the other sixteen million dollars of revenue annually, okay? So that's how we plan on generating the funds. What we've done is we've flown the area. So we've actually taken pictures in the winter and measured things up to the best of our abilities and calculated it that way, okay? I want to pause there and just ask if there's any questions about how we're calculating and generating, proposing to generate the funds. Yes, sir?
Mr. Parson?
Thank you. I just have a question on the actual cost. You're saying it would average two-twenty-five per month for a household. Is that a fixed cost, or is that something that's variable?
No, it's a fixed cost. So if your home falls between two thousand and one square feet of impervious area and thirty-six hundred square feet of impervious area, it would be two dollars and twenty-five cents a month.
Okay. Is it for a certain time limit, or?
No, it's every month.
I mean, it's not for a term of years or anything like that?
No, it's currently, it's currently not. No, sir.
Additionally, you mentioned some repairs that needed to be done to some of the systems. How do you choose what is a priority? I know there was a lot of areas that needed to be, needed to have some work done, but what are the priorities for MSD?
Very good question. We've cataloged all these issues that we've had out there. We've looked at the benefit, and there's a score that gives you the benefit on like number of properties that it affects and those types of things versus the cost. So we're looking at it from a benefit to cost ratio, and we're just taking the top ones and working our way down. So you may think, well, you won't get to some of those problems for quite some time, and the answer is yes. It would take quite some time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Parson. Yes, is there a sunset on these, on this proposition, sunset clause?
A sunset clause? No, not that I'm aware of. It would go on until, I guess, we decided not to, that we'd fixed everything. I mean, Sean, there's no, there's no sunset clause, right?
So there's no sunset clause on this at all, unlike our wastewater program where there is a sunset clause, that's like a twenty-year program. The, this will go on, and it's only, it can only go up, to answer your question, if it's voted on by the people. So it's a twenty, two dollars and twenty-five cents fixed rate that can never go up, but what we're looking at is for the next five-plus years, doing the program, we've got, you know, we've got properties identified. And what will happen is, at that point, we'll go back to the voters and say, is this something that you want us to continue to do, or just something you want us to go ahead and do more of? You know, and it can go up if the people vote on it, because it's a, it's a fee. It's not, it's not a tax, unlike back in two thousand and sixteen, you guys voted on Prop S, the original one, which is operation and maintenance of the sewers. That's a, that's a property tax, the ten cent tax that everybody pays. This is not a tax, this is actual, this is an actual fear charge that cannot be, again, adjusted without the vote of the people.
And just one more thing. If, if it doesn't pass, we won't provide the service. So it's really up to the voters. Yes, we want this service. If they, if they vote yes, hey, great, we're going to be able to supply it and everything. If they don't want the service, then we're not going to provide it.
Do you have a set of contractors that you deal with all the time on this? Are you going to go out for bid? Do you, I mean?
It'll be like we handle all of our projects right now. They'll go out to bid, you know, we'll develop specifications and put them out to the contracting community to bid on.
You're going to use local contractors for your bids, or do you go nationwide for them?
You know, I would assume that most of these would be local contractors. I think the projects are small enough, our local contracting community could do that. I can't say one-hundred percent. It just depends on the size and scope of the project and who's doing it here.
I know the way to, this community anyway, I mean, if we're paying our, our fees for you guys to do this work, we would like to see local contractors being awarded this work. Just, I mean, we're paying for it, so you guys should, you know, try to get local contractors to call this work.
Absolutely. Yep. Agree one-hundred percent with you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
Thank you. Just a curious question. So you have completed some projects. You gave an example of the creek, you know, the creeping creek bank up to the houses. And also, I know, and I don't think this is what would have been your, would have been MSD that did this, but in Florissant, we had some rain, rain gardens installed and a basin. And I think it was through St. Louis County, it may have been some grant money. But my question is, you know, how are you currently funding some of those projects that you are doing already? And will you continue to access that funding? Or, you know, rather than, is this the only funding? It kind of sounded like maybe there wasn't any funding, but there's also projects going on, so I'm trying to?
There, the funding, if this was approved, the funding would just go to correct these stormwater issues. MSD does have several grant programs, and you'd have to contact us on your particular project, and we could see if there is a grant that could possibly cover it. But if, if...
So currently, the projects that you're doing are being covered by grants?
No, the projects, we are doing a few stormwater projects. There was leftover dollars from the OMCI districts that used to be a tax that were set to zero, and we're consuming those dollars. Once those dollars are consumed, there's no more funding for stormwater capital improvements.
Okay. Do you, do you work with other agencies? You know, if St. Louis County does projects, do you also work with them? How do you decide whose project it's going to be if they're also doing projects?
You know, on a case-by-case basis, it depends on what the situation is. I can't, that's kind of an open question, I don't...
I'm just curious. It might not be a good answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Harris.
So, Mr. Harris, with regards to the rain basins that you're talking about, a lot of that stuff's under the wastewater program, but also, if this does go through, there will be an extension of the green infrastructure program. Right now, we have a hundred million dollars invested in our green infrastructure, which is the rain gardens and the basins, everything. There are, development-wise, there are stipulations put on what can be developed, and that's where you're seeing some of these basins being developed, because that's something that St. Louis County has to put on there, that has to be in our specifications. But the plus side to this program, though, if it does pass, we will have, right now, we have a green infrastructure program that, it's, we have a small grants program that's in the city of St. Louis and kind of just a little bit outside the bounds of the city of St. Louis. This will actually extend out throughout the entire St. Louis, throughout the entire district. And so there'll be money for grants for rain gardens, basins, and that type of stuff.
Will, will MSD still manage this if the Better Together Plan were to pass?
So, so that's a great question. So MSD, so MSD is a state, we're a state agency, or sorry, we're a regional, regional agency. Better Together has nothing to do, if anything happens with Better Together, that has had no effect on us, because first of all, we're, we're formed by the state constitution. One thing about MSD is we were actually one of the only organizations that was actually formed by the Board of Freeholders, and back in nineteen fifty-four. So Better Together, that was to go through, we don't, our districts don't go, our district is not off of municipalities, off of water, off of, sorry, um...
Right.
Watersheds, yeah, sorry. So it's off of watersheds.
Is it just in St. Louis County and St. Louis City?
Yeah, we, we have all of St. Louis City and most of St. Louis County. We have eighty-eight municipalities in St. Louis County. So basically, you draw a line from west of the Mississippi, or sorry, Mississippi all the way west to the Missouri River, one-oh-nine, we're east of one-oh-nine, which we don't have Eureka, because we go off the way the watersheds fall. So we don't have Eureka, and we don't have parts of Wildwood as well. So as far as, as far as this goes, the only thing that will change is our, what we've seen is our appointed authority, because right now, we have three Board of Trustees that are appointed by St. Louis County, and three that are appointed by the city of St. Louis Mayor. So we don't see anything changing with us as regards to this goes, and that's, that's kind of how, the only way to get to us would be to go through, to have a constitution change.
Which is what they're, which is what they propose?
Yeah, we have our own charter, though. Our charter actually supersedes the state constitution. But this is a different, this is a different type of change that they're trying to do, so.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to thank Council President Jeff Kaputa for extending the courtesy to MSD. MSD has been a good steward for the city of Florissant. We've done a lot of, you've done a lot of work to relieve stormwater issues for our residents of Florissant for many, many, many years, going all the way back into the seventies. And so we appreciated your stewardship, and we were happy to extend this courtesy. Back in nineteen fifty-four, as, I'm glad it was mentioned, that there was a successful Board of Freeholders. Board of Freeholders process can be successful. The Board of Freeholders process, for those of you who may not know, is the process that, where signatures are collected, and they compel the county executive and the mayor of St. Louis and to appoint nine members of a Board of Freeholders, and the governor of Missouri appoints one. And this is a process that's currently undertaking right now. Many, I think every, every member of this council, including myself, have collected signatures. This is an initiative of the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis, and so we're collecting at least fifteen thousand signatures in the county and five thousand in the city to form a Board of Freeholders to analyze the current form of governance that we might want to go forward with. This is, this is, this is, this is something that can be successful. I know when, in nineteen fifty-four, when I was six years old, I was a big supporter of MSD's initiative to get formed. I remember cleaning off their sign at Wismer in Baltimore after, I was forced to clean it up after I threw some mud on it. Anyway, so I supported your project back in nineteen fifty-four, and I, and I just, I support it this year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for having us. And again, it's on the ballot April second, and just get out and vote, is all we can tell you at this point.
Is that it? Again, thank you for letting us have a portion of your evening. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. This is a time to speak to the council of any issues, not necessarily on the agenda, for three minutes. This is not a question-and-answer period. If you would like to speak to a council member or the mayor, please stay until after the meeting is over. If you hear her to speak on a public hearing, please wait and speak when the public hearing is announced.
Robert Smith, two-eight-two-three, Chapelview. Have a concern about the finance, I guess, for the city of Florissant. I've been going on to the website to look for the monthly budget numbers, and they have not been posted since November of twenty eighteen. The quarterly reports have not been done since the first quarter of twenty eighteen, and we have not had an audit report for twenty eighteen. So every time we're moving money or adding money somewhere, I don't know where, how we can keep up with it, because we don't have any information on the system that the citizens are supposed to be able to check. And as far as I understood, the charter was, the charter says that you guys are supposed to get a report every month, as far as the budget goes. And have you guys received a budget or a monthly report as of November of twenty eighteen?
Yeah, Robert, we're, right now, we're in a different format, and we have received a new, they're doing, the finance directors came in, she's putting together a new format for the financial statement and everything, and that's what we, we finally, she's finally got that together, and that was earlier in our presentation, in our executive session, that she presented that to us. So it will now start going on there on a regular basis because of the new format.
And when can we expect to see that?
That, I'm not sure of. I will check that out, and we'll find out, and we'll let you know.
Okay.
All right. Yes, it will be definitely easier to read, this new format, it's, stuff's combined together, would definitely be easier to read for, for everybody.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Zeller, and I'm not going to give my address, because it's already on the card for the record. I want to talk about these vacant houses, the landlords that don't keep them up, they should have the same responsibility as what I have, owning a house, keeping it up. We've got a vacant house on our block. I've been going after this for the last four years. It's trash. Pictures have been sent to the building department, and all you do is get different answers every time. Nobody can give you why they're doing anything. They don't say they're going to do something. It's a worse mess now than it was four years ago. Same way with the vacant houses. The vacant houses and the rental houses, them landlords should be responsible. And you passed an ordinance that if any company owns a house, they got somebody fifty miles from here to take care of the property on the outside. You're not doing it. It hasn't been done for at least five years. City of Florissant with these houses has been going down, because there's too much now for the inspectors to go out there, because stuff has been left go and passed over for the last five years. Something's got to be done, because some of these houses are trash, and it's taken our property down, and I don't like it. Now, I'd like to have some answers with the building department of what they did, and they got the records of what house it is. I want paperwork showing what they have done, and get something done on this, because it's pathetic when you drive by and see siding coming off the carport, you got the overhang falling down with bird nests up there, you got buckets in the window. I know you can't do nothing about the inside, but either board the front window up or something so people don't see this. It's pathetic for the people that live on that block. This has been turned in, I bet, six or seven times in the last three years. Why can't something get done? Why isn't the inspectors going back on this stuff, instead of just getting the little bitty stuff? Let's take care of the property, and I hope that it gets done, because I'm going to come back up here next Monday to see on this house on Mark Twain Drive, what they have done in the last four years to improve it. Now, it's a disgrace, because I know if this house was next to the mayor, something would have been done four, or five, or six years ago. Now, you know, what, I know you can't answer, but I want answers by next Monday, when I go down and see Todd, and there's other people on the block that feels the same way.
Thank you, Jer.
Thank you.
Mr. Egan, do you have something?
I did. Gentlemen, we'll just move along.
Thank you. Next item is communications, which there are none. Next item is public hearing number one-nine-zero-two-zero-zero-two. A request for a special use permit for an adult daycare center at one-one-nine Flower Valley Shopping Center was read and postponed to this date. Are the petitioners present?
Hello, I'm Kenesha Elijah. I'm the one that applied. I applied for the special use permit. I submitted...
Ma'am, could you step up a little bit closer to the mic so we can hear?
Yeah. I'm Kenesha Elijah. I'm the owner that applied for the special use permit for the daycare in Flower Valley Shopping Center. I submitted the updated architectural drawings for the additional restroom, handicap-accessible restroom that was requested to be added.
Do you have an extra copy of the people's letter?
I actually don't have a copy, but I did bring some copies with me.
Did you have some copies?
No, we haven't. Those are the ones that were in our... Where are, you want me to put them somewhere?
If they can turn that for you.
This is the copy of it. Added the additional handicap-accessible bathroom next to the existing bathroom already, and it does meet all of the requirements for St. Louis County and the city of Florissant.
Mr. Sayem?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Ms. Elijah, like, we were talking on the phone earlier today about the wheelchair-accessible ramps in front of Flower Valley Shopping Center, and you felt like that was something you could work with. Do you want to explain, like?
Yes, so I did assess the outside of it today, and I do understand what you're talking about. Some of them are like, probably like a hundred and fifty yards away from the entrance of it. So I did contact my landlord, and me and him are going to sit down and schedule a meeting in regards to getting one installed right there in front of the doorway.
Oh, okay. That would be great if you could.
Yes.
And then I have just a few other miscellaneous questions. Do you know what'll be the ratio of caregivers to clients at this, at this adult daycare?
Yes, so we're applying for licensing for the maximum of sixteen participants. So the worker ratio would be two patient care staff to every sixteen, two to sixteen participants, not including the director of the program.
Okay, and is the, is the entrance going to be secured from the inside to keep people, you know, adults who are in the daycare from wandering out?
Yes.
And stuff like that? Okay. And then, are your staff members going to be trained in first aid and CPR and such things like that?
Yes, that is a requirement.
Okay, and finally, will you be providing transportation for the, for your clients?
Yes, we will eventually be providing transportation, but starting now, we're going to contract with a transportation company.
Okay, that was, that was my question about that, like, if, if you're, if the people who do provide the transportation need a commercial driver's license of some sort, but if you contract that out, then they would have it?
Yes, so starting now, we're going to contract until we get a driver with the commercial driver's license.
Okay. That's all I had for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sayem. Mr. Egan?
Thank you. I came by your business last week, or the last meeting. Where do you plan on having folks dropped off at?
The drop-off is going to be in front of the daycare where the, it's like, like, directly in the front of it. That's where we're going to do the unloading, we're going to...
It's a fire lane right now, correct?
Yes.
You're going to unload in a fire lane? That's illegal.
I guess we're going to do, well, we can, we have the back entrance as well, so...
Yeah, I also went to the back entrance, and, and I saw that there are dumpsters back in there, and there's traffic, and there's big trucks coming through. I'll be very candid with you, I'm not a fan of daycares in a, a strip mall type of setting. We have outlawed in the city of Florissant for child daycares for these very reasons. I went and stepped off from the curb to the nearest handicap zone, and it appears to be somewhere around, from the front door to the nearest handicap zone, at least a hundred yards. I mean, you have that big wide berth in there, and I just have concerns with people getting in and out of the vans and getting them there. What are your hours of operation going to be?
Hours of operation are going to be nine to five.
Will you be, will you be dispensing medicine, medication?
No, participants, they're allowed to self-administer their medicine. So the daycare is more of a social facility.
Okay. So they, they can bring medication, what, will you be accepting people who are not capable of self-administering?
No.
Will you be accepting folks that have, that have the potential, I guess, are you be doing Alzheimer's patients?
No.
Okay, so there's no worry about people wandering off or anything like that?
No, we're just a social facility.
What about food? How is food going to be handled?
Food's going to be catered in, but our employees will be trained on prepping, handling, and go through a training certification course for that.
Okay, very good. That's, and there will be no CNAs or RNs on, on?
We will have LPN that'll come in once a month to evaluate the clients that we have, that is just like a physical evaluation.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mr. Hinky?
Good evening. Thank you. I noticed on your, your drawing there, the name of it is Living Essentials In-Home Services. Do you also provide in-home services?
Yes.
Okay, so this is an offshoot, but what kind of in-home services do you provide?
We provide non-medical in-home services for participants in the North County area, so anyone that has need home assistance with personal care at home, we've been providing those services for five years now. We also provide nurse visits as well for some participants that may have a little more complex health issues, and will contract with nurses to get them out.
Right, and I'm, I agree with Councilman Egan here also. I'm not a fan of these in, in shopping centers. I don't think that was the design of the shopping center, which does not conducive to this type of business. But you said this is a, more of a social facility. Could you describe that?
So what it is, is for people that, that are receiving home health services, the elderly, so to get them out the house, become socialized to help keep their mental state, to avoid going into a nursing home.
Okay, and the, your, I don't even know what the right word to use, your patrons, your customers, your clients, whatever the right terminology is. These will be, how many hours a day per individual?
Per individual, so the maximum is eight hours a day.
Eight hours, right?
Yes, that's the max that we'll take. But the hours a day for each participant can range anywhere from three hours at a minimum up to eight hours a day.
Up to eight hours. And do you think any of these, any of your clients or your work will actually be bringing themselves to this facility?
No. They will be, it will be transportation provided. They will be, it will be transportation provided because it's a need for this type of facility within the business that I'm in. Now, we have clients that are interested in the daycare.
Okay, and I did notice, reading up on some of the requirements, that you're required to provide four hours per day of, of structured activity.
Exactly.
Could you give us an idea of what this structured activity is?
So, structured activity will be, we'll have an agenda set up. So, one day, we might do exercise programs. We'll have arts and crafts plans for the individuals. Some days, we'll have field trips and outings, like, so, we'll have a whole plan and schedule for each day. And they'll be generated monthly of what our plans are.
Okay, and is, is rest time considered as structured time?
Yes, we actually have a quiet room for individuals that may come, and they're not feeling well, or they want to rest. And we have a total of six recliners will be set up where they can go in there and just rest and relax. And we also have a separate room where they have a bed where they can lay down if needed.
Okay, so theoretically, your, your four hours of structured time could be met by rest time?
If that's what the client chooses to do.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinky. Mr. Egan.
My question has been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Yes, I haven't supported these bills in the past. Our shopping centers were not made for these facilities, and I will not be supporting this, just to be upfront with you. We've had some people come in front of us and said they've stuck a bunch of money in some of these buildings. I did apologize to that one lady, but I just cannot support this. Like I said, these shopping centers weren't designed for these, and I won't be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yes, did you say, ma'am, that the landlord of the shopping is going to install, Sawcut and install a wheelchair ramp directly in front of-
Yes.
-proposing?
Yes, we have. Mm-hmm, I have a meeting scheduled to talk to him about discussing installing it to see if he's willing to do it. If not, I'm willing to put one in.
Okay, all right. That's all I have. Thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, Councilman Sayem moves to close the public hearing, second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Public hearing is closed. Next item is old business. Bill number 9475. Ms. Pagano moves for a second reading.
Second by-
Second by Ms., Mr. Hinky. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it.
An ordinance authorizing an amendment to be, five ordinance number 5239, to allow for an adult daycare as a special use for the property located at 58 Grandview Plaza Shopping Center.
Ms. Pagano moves for a third reading, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Opposed.
We have one opposed.
It's not for three, so I can read it.
Eyes have it.
For reading.
Yeah, I can read it, yeah. An ordinance authori- It's not three. Yeah. An ordinance authorizing amendment to be, five ordinance number 5239, to allow for an adult daycare as a special use for the property located at 58 Grandview Plaza Shopping Center.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Sayem?
No.
Harris?
No.
Jones?
No.
Egan?
Nope.
Caputa?
No.
Shuldorff?
No.
Hinky?
No.
Pagano?
No.
Parsons?
No.
Bill number 9475 fails. Next item on the, is bill number 9477. Councilman Sayem moves for a second reading, second by myself. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it.
An ordinance to authorize an amendment to the provisions of the B5 ordinance 7965, to allow for an outdoor online grocery pickup area and associated parking revisions for Walmart for the property located at 3390 North Highway 67.
Councilman Sayem moves for a third reading, second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it.
An ordinance to authorize an amendment to B5, to the provisions of B5 ordinance number 7965, to allow for an outdoor online grocery pickup area and associated parking revisions for Walmart for the property located at 3390 North Highway 67.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this bill? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
No.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bill number 9477 passes and become ordinance 8499. Bill number 9479. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I move to make a motion to postpone this.
Second.
There's a motion to postpone bill number 9479, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
You need to continue it to a date certain or table. I don't know what postpone, what your intention is.
Okay, I will table it then, John. I'll make the motion to table it.
So, you, Mr. Jones, you withdraw your motion to postpone it, and you make a motion to table it?
That is correct.
All in, and second by Ms. Pagano?
I would, I would refer, me personally, I would prefer continuing it on it to a date whether, I know we weren't looking for more information, and so, I would prefer continuing it. I'd have to look in the calendar for dates.
Our discussion was last meeting.
Because I, I thought we would have-
It was never read for a second, and our discussion on it was last meeting. Then it wasn't read as a second.
I'll go with March 8th.
April 8th.
May?
April 8th.
Let's see. April 8th.
Eight, oh, well, okay, before, I'm sorry, but before we do this, are we going to have some sort of work session on this? Or not to talk about the bits where we're going to go out and more? Is that what we're doing? Otherwise, I continue it till April, whatever, came after that.
April 22nd.
I don't have my calendar.
Yeah, there's two meetings in April, the 8th and the 22nd, and possibly the 22nd that could be continued.
Okay, I can go with the 22nd.
April 22nd.
April 22nd.
And then have some sort of a work session in-
That sounds great.
-there, please?
Yes.
So, we can gather more information and more bits.
Okay, so I withdraw again and go to postponement.
Continue.
Continuing.
We're continuing.
Till?
22nd.
April 22nd.
Just for clarity, that there really is no motion-
Okay, there's a motion on the-
For clarity, there is no motion to postpone.
Okay.
I'm not trying to, you either make a motion to table, and as Jackie is suggesting, when you put it on the table, things get complicated. So, it's, I recommend that you have a motion to continue to a date certain, which is April 22nd.
Okay, sounds great.
For purposes of clarity, we have not had a second reading, so this is prior to second reading.
Correct.
Understood.
So, there's a motion to continue it to the April 22nd meeting by Mr. Jones, second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Egan.
That was an accident. I got excited.
Next item, new business. Board appointments. Mr. Shuldorff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to appoint Catherine Doherty, 755 Harrison, to the Citizen Participation Commission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Appointment's made.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shuldorff. Mr. Sayem.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to reappoint Robert Shoemaker, 1440 Thorobread, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee.
Second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Appointment's made. Mr. Harris?
Yeah, I'd like to reappoint Mary Pat Outlaw, Outlaw of Central Parkway to the Citizens Participation Committee.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Appointment's made. Next item is res- Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to appoint Catherine Shockley to the, from Ward 1, to the Environmental Quality Commission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Appointment's made.
And I'd like to reappoint Denise LeFier to, from Ward 9, to the Senior Commission.
Second by Ms. Pagano. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item is resolution. Resolution number 1009.
A resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Judge Patrick, Judge Daniel Patrick Boyle for his eight years of service to the City of Florissant and North County.
Councilman Hinky moves for a second reading, second by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all against? Eyes have it.
A resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Judge Daniel Patrick Boyle for his eight years of service to the City of Florissant.
Councilman Shuldorff moves for a third reading, second by Ms. Pagano. Roll call, please.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
A resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Judge Daniel Patrick Boyle for his eight years of service to the City of Florissant and North County.
Before the final vote is taken, is there anyone on this, on the, in the audience that would like to speak on this resolution? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
A resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Judge Daniel Patrick Boyle for his eight years of service to the City of Florissant and North County.
Councilman Hinky moves for a second reading, second by myself. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all against? Eyes have it.
A resolution of the Florissant City Council honoring Judge Daniel Patrick Boyle for his eight years of service to the City of Florissant.
Councilman Shuldorff moves for a third reading, second by Ms. Pagano. Roll call, please.
Sayem?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Egan?
No.
Caputa?
No.
Shuldorff?
Yes.
Hinky?
Yes.
Pagano?
No.
Parsons?
No.
So, that's one, two, three, four, five, six, no's.
No second. Requests failed for package liquor license at the Dollar General, second by Mr. Shuldorff. Roll call, please.
Sayem?
Next on agenda is application. Councilman Jones moves to approve the request to keep chickens for Richard King for the property located at 2375 Buttonwood Court, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carried. Permit is approved.
No.
Request is failed for package liquor license at the Dollar General. Bill number 9474.
An ordinance authorizing a special use permit-
Next on agenda is application. Councilman Jones moves to approve the request to keep chickens for Richard King for the property located at 2375 Buttonwood Court, second by myself. All in favor?
Wage increases.
Aye, all opposed?
Section A, job classification agreement.
Eyes have it. Motion carried. Permit is approved.
By adding a new position of property maintenance and housing inspector.
Request is failed for package liquor license at the Dollar General. Bill number 9474. Mr. Shuldorff.
An ordinance authorizing a special use permit-
Next on agenda is application. Councilman Jones moves to approve the request to keep chickens for Richard King for the property located at 2375 Buttonwood Court, second by myself. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carried. Permit is approved. Request is failed for-
Next item is council announcements.
Bill number 9474. Mr. Shuldorff.
An ordinance authorizing a special use permit-
Next on agenda is application. Councilman Jones moves to approve the request to keep chickens for Richard King for the property located at 2375 Buttonwood Court, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carried. Permit is approved. Request is failed for-
Next item is council announcements.
Bill number 9474. Mr. Shuldorff.
An ordinance authorizing a special use permit-
Next on agenda is application. Councilman Jones moves to approve the request to keep chickens for Richard King for the property located at 2375 Buttonwood Court, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Mr. Parsons?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind all of the, the residents in Ward Number 8 and all of the other wards that if you have any issues with Meridian, missing trash pickups, yard waste, and recycling, that the best way to handle things is to contact your, your councilperson. We can get direct contact with the regional manager who will make, while they've been making efforts to go ahead and, and take care of the missed pickups. So, it's important that you contact us. I know sometimes that customer service can be an issue, so it's best that you contact and all of us have been collecting signatures and Saturday, I'm going to be out collecting signatures. I'll be at a location. You know, if you want to sign, get ahold of me, get ahold of one of these guys. And Saturday from eleven-thirty to three, I'm inviting people to come to where I am. So I've published that on Facebook and, and it, it's a little tentative with the weather, so get ahold of me and then I'll add you to a list and we can all get together for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Mr. Parson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind all of the, the residents in Ward number eight and all of the other wards that if you have any issues with Meridian, missing trash pickups, yard waste, and recycling, that the best way to handle things is to contact your councilperson. We can get direct contact with the regional manager who will make, while they've been making efforts to go ahead and take care of the missed pickup. So it's important that you contact us. I know sometimes that customer service can be an issue, so it's best that you contact your councilman if you have any issues with that. Additionally, just want to say happy birthday to my oldest daughter. She is nineteen years old today. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Parson. Mr. Egan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Number one, I did receive a couple complaints on the last delivery from, our last pickup cycle from Meridian, and I reached out to them. They were very, very helpful. They got their issues taken care of within that day. And I'm not, one was delivery and one was another service related issue. They did a real good job, but Mr. Parsons is correct that contact your councilperson. Number two, we probably should have mentioned this earlier, the month that we're currently in, March, is a, a day, a month designed to honor female police officers. And if you've been following the Facebook post from the Florissant Facebook page, you see that they've been honoring the ladies, not just the two ladies we had, but honoring all the different female officers that work for the city of Florissant Police Department. And I just want to shout out to them, and we appreciate not only all the work that, that all the officers do, but we also understand the particular hardships it can be to be a lady in law enforcement, and we keep them in our hearts as they do their duties this month. Finally, this is our last weekend for the St. Ferdinand BBQ and Basketball Tournament. We've had a great tournament. Our recipient this year is Elijah Paul, a, I think he's five months old. He spent every day in the hospital. He was born four months premature, and he had a cancerous tumor that he was engulfed his body. They've been working on both those issues. I'm happy to report that Elijah, who lives in Ward number three, if they, when they release him from the hospital, is now off the ventilator, and that's very, very, very encouraging news. We will be at St. Ferdinand this weekend from ten AM to dark, both Saturday and Sunday. Come on by and meet the Paul family. They've been there sporadically. Say hi to us and get some great barbecue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to start out, I've got a couple things here, with, we have an election coming up. It's April second. Please take the time to go up and vote. Grab your younger kids or younger people in the house and teach them that they need to go up and take the time to vote, please. The second thing I would like to give a shout out to team, our food pantry down the street, you guys, they're always needing change, canned goods, help, anything you can do for team, they would appreciate it down there. There's always a bunch of volunteers down there putting their time in, so please take the time and do something good for the neighborhood and some of the people that are down and out right now. Third off, it's very embarrassing to drive around Ward two and see couches and mattresses out on a continuous basis on trash days. The bulk pickup is the third Thursday of every month. All you have to do is call the trash contractor and tell them what you're putting out, so they're on the same page with you. Please don't drag the stuff out there and don't make the call, and it sits there for weeks, and then I will come by and write you up, because it's embarrassing in those neighborhoods to find seven couches on a trash day that sit there for three weeks. Out of hand, unacceptable. To move on away from that, on a positive note, I two seventy North Design Build Project is moving forward. That is our two seventy corridor. They're procuring a contractor to complete this important construction. There's a briefing coming up for elected officials here shortly, but that is going to happen, you guys, which is going to benefit our city in a bunch of ways. It's been needing to be done for a long time, and there is going to be traffic problems that everybody's going to be upset about, but it's for the betterment of this community. So when this thing starts to go down, please have patience. Be careful because of the construction workers, and we don't want you to damage your vehicles neither. But this is coming up right around the corner, and I thought I would reach out and spit it out to you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Yes, if you're a firearm owner, make sure you secure your firearms, you're not leaving them in your vehicles so where they can be stolen. Got a good neighborhood watch program here in the city. Got something that happened with the neighborhood watch that works. Last week, we had a, had a residence observe several individuals breaking into a home, called the police. Police came, foot chase was, and they apprehended, apprehended the juveniles. They were juveniles, but they did apprehend it, and the neighborhood watch does work. A neighbor did see what was going on, called the police, and it did work. So if you're not a part of the neighborhood watch program, join the neighborhood watch program. If you're not, if you don't want to join, make sure you're out there looking out for all your neighbors and, and your, your homes. Thank you. Yes, Joe?
Should we get that person a nice recognition from the city? It may not be in front of the council because their, their desire for anonymity, but perhaps we can make sure we can get a nice resolution?
Yes, we could. We hit, I'll get with the police.
Thank you very much.
We'll get the police report on it. Thank you, Ms. Egan. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. In regards to Meridian, we have seen noticeable improvement from what we had several months ago. Your council members are taking care of those. Sometimes, sometimes the mayor's offices remind the council to relay the episodes to the, to my office since we're keeping score. On another Meridian-related topic, you remember in your two thousand and nineteen calendar that you got beginning of this year, there was some discussion of changes to recycling. Meridian has met with the Environmental Quality Commission to, to, to share with them what they're doing in Wildwood, and that discussion will come to the city council in a, in the near future. Basically, what they proposed is to use a third category and change the, the blue tote instructions to include metal and plastic, and to take the cardboard and newspaper into a separate container every other week, and then glass will be voluntary. Either you could, you could take it down to a collection point, probably at St. Ferdinand Park, or you could put it in your kitchen waste. Either way, it's going to benefit because the glass, if it's clean, can be recycled as construction material, and the glass, it seems to help with the compaction of landfill. So the glass can go either way. Those discussions will come to the council very soon. I'm encouraged because the, it seems to be working in Wildwood, so they actually are producing recyclable material that has a market, which is what we really need to have happen. It was an honor to be with the Valley, Valley Flowers Queen and her court in the St. Patrick's Day Parade downtown on March sixteenth this past month. And then a few days later, I had the honor of having lunch with the Speaker of the House, Nancy Pelosi, and Congressman Lacy Clay. They were here to promote voting rights, and I think that that is a very noble cause that, that they're promoting. Also, I wanted to announce in the future, we're going to, on April sixth, we're going to have the electronic recycling at St. Ferdinand Park from nine to one PM, or until the trucks reach their capacity, so maybe try to get there earlier. There is some nominal charges for certain items. You can go online and see what those charges are. So that, that is on April sixth. We get into our Easter activities. Cheryl Thompson's always coming up with the novel ideas that we, as we saw during our Christmas season, and we have an underwater egg hunt on Friday, April twelfth, at the indoor pool. That's for ages seven to fourteen. That's six thirty PM, so call the Egan Center for more information, or the JFK Center. And then following the April thirteenth, we'll have the regular outdoor Easter, the traditional Easter egg hunt, and we'll have the Easter Bunny there. That's on Saturday, April thirteenth, from ten to noon. And then we have egg decorating on Wednesday, April eighteenth. We have, first session is six fifteen, the second session is seven fifteen. Again, call the Egan Center or the JFK Center for that. We have something new this year. We have Veterans Jobs Fair. It's going to be at the JFK Center, sponsored by City of Florissant and the Veterans, VFW and American Legion, and UMSL, and Amazon, and a Veteran Suicide Awareness Project. So that will be at, on April nineteenth, from nine to two PM. On, we have document shredding after tax day, of course. It's going to be April twenty-seventh, so you'll have to hold those documents for about twelve days, but the document shredding day is very popular. It's nine AM to twelve noon, or until trucks reach their capacity, and that's going to be at Ferdinand Park also. We're going to have the famous Florissant Garage Sale at the ice rink. Of course, it'll be, won't be any ice, it'll be concrete, so we'll have the Great Garage Sale on April twenty-seventh from nine to noon. Then remember, summer playground, the signups are already started. I'd like to encourage everyone, anyone that has access to Netflix, to watch a program that's narrated by Will Smith, and it features eight astronauts with many, many, many months and years in space looking down at Earth, and the name of it is One Strange Rock. And you'll come away from that, I think it's a ten series special on Netflix, and it's about how fragile our planet's ecosystem really is, and how we used to have, the amount of carbon dioxide that was gone into the atmosphere was from volcanoes. Now man used to put, mankind put about that same amount in, into the atmosphere until the Industrial Revolution. Now we're putting sixty times what volcanoes put into the atmosphere, and the planet cannot reprocess all that into oxygen, and that's why the planet is warming up. So I encourage you to watch One Strange Rock, narrated by Will Smith and eight fantastic astronauts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.